Our monthly financial analysis from September. Maybe. I'll wait for Alisa. Do you have it? Ouch. Do you have the, Alisa?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Okay. This is through September, which is seventy-five percent of the year. So for people who like percentages, that helps you with that. And again, last month was the first time I had split it out into the major funds. Typically, we have shown it citywide, but I thought it was important to break out the major funds. So at the top, we have the general fund. And at the end of September, you can see the cash that is at. The operating cash that's allocated to the general fund is almost five and a half million. And the unassigned fund balance, which is the equity or the reserve, that is six point three million. And the next box shows our major revenue statistics from the general fund. Most of those are taxes. First one is the local option sales tax. And you can see, we are at sixty-three percent of the budget. And the reason that is less than the seventy-five percent is because we actually are a month in arrears. So the money we receive in January will be pushed back into 2016. But we are slightly higher than last year. Property taxes is still showing very low, but as of October, we have started seeing those come in. So your October number, you'll start to see an increase there. Fines and forfeit- fines and forfeitures is down compared to the prior year. But we are changing the way we account for these fines and forfeitures. Our auditors let us know that some of those should be accounted for in charges for service in different areas. So we are still getting that money in, but it's posted to different places now.
Wait a minute, wait. The auditor said that they are what?
They are not technically, so we have charges for different things.
When they were signed, they were signed.
I may have to get some assistance on that. But if they're not a fine or forfeiture, they could be like a court processing fee, Chief, if you want to speak on that.
I guess what I'm asking is, what it sounded like was something different than fines and forfeitures. It sounded like you said something else.
Yes. So it might not be a fine, it would be a charge for service. So I don't include it in the fines and forfeitures, it's included somewhere else.
Because that's not a fine or forfeiture.
Right, it's just a fee, a service. Also, we have money, some money that comes, comes into us is not really revenue. It goes straight back out. It's kind of a pass-through for the city. So that shouldn't be posted as revenue and expense because it's not really ours. It's really a liability to us to turn around and pay it.
Okay. So they may not necessarily really be down.
Correct.
It's that there were things in there that really weren't fines and forfeitures.
Exactly.
Would that be correct?
That is correct.
All right, I understand.
We're trying to get our accounting correct on that. Occupational tax, this is up from last year at eighty-eight, or we're at eighty-eight percent of the budget and we're at five percent over last year. The next box is just the overall fund status. So you can see the budget for the year and the year-to-date for revenue and expense there. Percentage of budget received on revenue is so low, thirty-six percent. But that is because we have over three million coming in for property taxes the last couple of months of the year. And then expense is down compared to the prior year at one percent. So that's a good thing.
So our, our cash is eleven and a half million dollars and unrestricted. Go back up, please.
Go back to the top, please.
Yeah. Eleven and a half million with total unassigned fund balance and operating.
They, cash is included in that unoperating, that unassigned fund balance. So you can't add them together to come up with your cash. Your cash is the five point four and then the unassigned fund balance is six point three. That is reserve available to be spent. And the difference between those might be receivables or things that haven't necessarily liquidated into cash.
I know there's some, some questions and issues about the ten and a half million. Before it's over with, there's many people say, well, wait a minute now, if we add five and six together and get eleven and, and almost eleven and a half million, yeah, that's what the reason I'm asking for.
Okay.
On the revenue side, down here where the fund status is?
Yes.
The budget is twelve, but we only showing four point four. But you say we only have about three million in taxes outstanding?
There are other things. That's just the, the property taxes. Just this month, just last week alone, we took one point three million and only a part, portion of that was property tax. We take in almost a million dollars in the, let's close that, nine hundred thousand dollars in the insurance premium tax. We get that once a year, we just got that last week. So there are other things. Some of that is transfers from the other funds to pay for operating expenses. And I'll have to look at my budget to see more. But you're right, there is more than just the three and a half for property taxes. Anything else on general fund? If you look at the graph, you can see through September, we've kind of stayed on trend with the prior years. And then as expected, October, November, December will shoot up as we get in our property tax and other. The next one is the water sewer enterprise fund. Again, enterprise fund being business-type activity. And the cash for, at the end of September, again, this is the pooled cash, if you remember back to my presentation a couple of weeks ago. We do have pooled cash, so we don't have a negative cash account at the bank. But the portion of cash attributed to water sewer is a negative six hundred thousand, which is actually better than it was last month. It was negative seven hundred thousand. That total investments is a CD that we have in the water sewer fund. So that is cash sitting in a CD there. And then our outstanding bond. And then our, our unrestricted equity portion for that fund is one point four million. Which makes sense because the CD less the operating cash is about one point four million. Revenue statistics, these are our two major revenues in this fund. And you can see they are closer to that seventy-five percent of the percentage of budget received so far this year. And they are both trending higher than last year. Fund status, you can see the overall budget and the year-to-date. And again, you can see the percentage of the budget, which should be close to seventy-five and higher than last year. The expense is forty-five percent higher than last year due to be buying water a hundred percent from January to August. And then on the graph, you can see we are trending higher than last year, which is the green line, the yellow line is this year. But twenty fourteen still is showing higher than this current year. And lastly, we have the solid waste fund. The cash is a negative almost two hundred thousand. Again, that's not in, sitting there in the bank like that, it's part of a pooled cash. And then the reserve is a negative one hundred and thirteen thousand. The revenue statistics, our solid waste fund is bringing in, it's brought in sixty-four percent. Again, we bill a month in reserves, or arrears, excuse me. So part of what we receive in January, we'll be booked back to this year. And then we are showing higher than last year. And fund status overall, both our revenue and expense are kind of following the trend of just slightly higher over last year. And if you look at the graph, you can see that we are above both last year and the prior year before that. Any questions on the financial update? This is on the website and next week I will have the check register out there as well.
Well, at last, in solid waste, what's the big kink out there in November for two thousand fourteen?
In December, we have the December billing and the, like I said, we, we bill, we take part of the January billing. That's for our, the twenty, well, the current year, and we book it back. So it looks like December shoots up because it's one and a half, almost two months' worth of revenue there. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is B, is planning zone, and that's Ms. Vicki.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
This is an application that's being initiated by the city. The request is to accept an existing driveway. It may be helpful if you pull up the site. Just a little, yes, we kind of work from there. There is an existing, since your driveway, it's, it's really more so like an alley between Temple Street and Church Street that it currently isn't designated as city-owned property. And there have been two properties over there that have been addressed off of this road. It's currently called Loft Lane, Loft Street, excuse me. And so this request is to accept this particular alley or driveway as a city road. I think part of the issue is that it may reserve, address some nine-one-one issues if public safety concerns arose and nine-one-one needed to be able to find or locate the properties that are addressed off this street.
So it's called Loft Street, but the desire is to call it Loft Lane?
It's currently called Loft Street, it probably will retain that name. The question is, right now, it's, it's just a, a private alleyway, but there aren't any names attached to this one. Not really sure how it ended up where this road ended up being addressed also with properties on it. But again, the desire is to make it accepted as a public street.
Yeah, I don't have a problem.
Is it going to be lane or street?
It would retain, it would, it would retain, it's currently unnamed now. So part of that process, if we accept it, is to name it as Loft Street. I'm not quite sure.
I don't care which one it is, but it says two different things on it.
Yeah.
This says one thing and the picture, the drawing says another. I don't care which one they choose, just they might want to make it say the same.
Be consistent. I'll double-check with David as to which one it is. Because again, if you go into the record, there isn't anything designated in the tax record right now. Again, because it's private and hasn't been accepted. But we'll clarify for Tuesday to make sure that, what the two addresses, whether it's Loft Street or Loft Lane.
Wouldn't you want to kind of go with those, if they're using the address as Loft Lane, wouldn't you want to kind of go with that? So they wouldn't have to change all their paperwork?
That's if it is in fact Loft Lane.
The postal service is calling it something. And on here, it says the postal service has been calling it Loft Lane. If that's accurate, it would make sense to stick with whatever they.
Otherwise, you're going to mess up two, two citizens.
Correct.
All their paperwork.
So we'll verify that it's in fact Loft Lane. And if that's the case, then we'll make it clear for Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
Be inconsistent with this council if we accept this street because it is not up to standards of the city.
So what are we going to do about that?
I can give it up standard, if this don't belong to us.
Apparently, it doesn't belong to, that's the problem. We're not accepting it from anybody because it's like a city street that we haven't been calling a city street, it sounds like to me.
That is correct. The only other alternative that I would, I would, if, if you choose not to accept it as a council, then my only other recommendation would be to readdress the two properties. And, you know, then that particular point, you've already addressed any nine-one-one or public safety concerns. It's not really uncommon to readdress properties. That may be another solution. But if, again, if the issue is accepting a substandard road, that's a, an alternative.
So what do you mean when you say readdress?
So change those two addresses from a Loft Lane to either, I'd go and double-check where the entrance of the property is and then address it off that particular street. So whether it's a temple or if it, I believe that may be Church Street, it could potentially be addressed off of those two streets.
What do we do with that piece of road there that's not up standards?
I think the city's going to have to tell the city to bring it up to standard because apparently it's really ours, we're just not calling it ours. So who would we require to bring it up to standard? Ourselves?
Yeah, ourselves, yeah.
There's some, there's some, some standards that can't be brought up to. We can't have enough road right-of-way because it's not there.
Okay.
It's going to be a sixteen-foot wide road.
We should attempt to see what we can do.
Yeah, I think it was just one of those things when that area was developed. Typically, you would have the developer designate what's going to remain private, whether it's an alley or whatever have you. And that would stay in common property and to be designated that way. But somehow, this was missed, so.
Well, the reason it was missed, it was never developed as a apartment complex. It was a mill. Or, and that's the reason that they shut it down and then made apartments out of it. It was, it was an alley. And it still belongs to those people who own. It was never intended to be a street.
We don't know that for sure, though.
But we know it was a mill before then, not apartments.
We do know that, but we don't know that it wasn't a street at some point in time. I mean, we've got all sorts of places that were probably streets a hundred years ago that, you know.
Different standards back then.
Over the course of time have been moved and closed and opened.
Can't ignore it.
Okay. The next item. The next item, this is a, a request concerning final plat approval. This is the Twin Oaks Phase Two of the subdivision. The city received a, a request for final plat approval from the developer. If you don't mind. This original subdivision, the original preliminary plat started in two thousand and seven. And with the economy, it failed to move forward through final plat stages. However, some of the initial infrastructure has gone in. At this particular stage in the process, staff is going to recommend deferral on this item. They're going back out, we did some inspections of the site just to check the, the state of the infrastructure that's in there. And there's still quite a bit of work that needs to be done. Since two thousand and seven, I would say the final inspections weren't necessarily occurring up to this time. So Alisa has some photos. We want to ensure that, number one, that any of the sewer, water lines, sewer lines, that they have properly sent cameras down to make sure their, their, the infrastructure's not failing in any way. There's been some damage to some of what would ultimately be, if we accept this plat and approve it, what would be some of the city-owned infrastructure. You see where some of the road is caving along the curve, some of the.
Is this supposed to all appear hot pink?
I can't look that way up there now.
I couldn't tell what I was looking at.
So.
I didn't get that, those pictures.
Oh, okay, that makes sense. Yeah, that, it didn't appear like that at all on here. Okay, got it.
There are other requirements as it relates to subdivisions. You know, their stormwater detention area has not been maintained in any way. Now, that's something that it wouldn't necessarily turn over to the city. But we want to ensure that all of that, those facilities are working properly. Again, some of the fire hydrants that have been installed were damaged when they came back through the bush hog. So at this particular time.
You want us to wait?
We want, we certainly want you to defer taking any action on this particular approval of this final plat.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Wait until this brought up, this code specs before, wait until it's brought up to code spec before we accept it. Is that what you're saying, you all recommend?
Yes, we'll make sure that they have done several things to make sure that they're in compliance before we accept it. And then, of course, when we finally accept it and it turns over, we'll make sure that all the necessary maintenance bonds are in place for the subdivision.
Thank you, Vicki.
All right, thanks. C is public works. Mr. Pete, you want?
Take care of that, boss.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Council.
Yes.
First one here, a hard house is just a very brief status update. We are currently diligently working to come up with alternative routes to route the sewer on this property. And we will have some, some of those identified and the pricing for that prior to the council meeting, so on Tuesday.
How many routes are we talking about?
Right now, there were three identified. And I was in discussion with John Bass this afternoon. It looks like we may even have a fourth one after that discussion.
Are the prices looking cheaper than the three and a hundred and ninety?
Well, I haven't seen any prices yet. I've just seen kind of how the lines run and what the elevations are and that sort of thing. And the last one that we looked at that we're kicking around right now, it might be the, the cheapest one yet. But we, we're going to have to do some, some hustling to get that extra information together to, to really see if it's viable or not.
Is it going to involve a pumping station?
We're trying not to involve a pumping station. One scenario looked like it would require a lift station, but we're trying to avoid that. And I'd like to get together with the engineer for the Baptist church and take a look at what they currently have with their lift station as well and see if there's any compatibility with what they have versus this last discussion that we had this afternoon. It may bear fruit, it may not. But it's definitely worth looking at.
We'll see that Tuesday.
Yes, sir. Two, three, and four will be related to the North Loop bypass. The, the first one is utilities. Georgia Department of Transportation has requested the city to verify the existing water and sewer utilities and provide, provide and prepare the final relocation for those in preparation for the widening and improvements of that project. And we're recommending that the engineering service proposal with Keck and Wood for that in the amount of twenty-two thousand dollars to cover that work. In the scope of that, we also want to include not only the utility identification and relocation where it needs to go, but if there's any additional improvements that we need to make or anticipation of anything, future growth that we see coming in in that corridor, it can be identified and addressed. It's not a budgeted item in our current budget, and it would have to be paid from the fund balance. If you'd like me to, I could go through all three of them. Or would you like to just ask questions on this one, if you have any? Okay.
Fine with me if you went through all three.
The next one is database. It's pretty straightforward. Because of the time delay in the project, a lot of the roads, surfaces have been overlaid when they were first surveyed. So there's a need to go back and resurvey and update the field data and, and update the databases.
Overlayed how?
Pardon me?
Overlayed how?
Yes, that means resurfaced, is that what that means?
In some cases, yes, it has been resurfaced.
Then we will get a list of the resurfaced roads and those were the only ones that will be re-engineered.
I think, I think they'll all have to be looked at and, and surveyed and determine whether, whether some will need engineering and some may be all right, I don't know.
That's not their, that's not their decision to make. I mean, their decision should be, as, as this says, to inform the, the city of the payment resurfacing affected by the North Loop. So that tells me that only the roads that have been resurfaced should be the ones that they're telling us to be engineered or resurveyed.
That's the.
The rest of them should not be resurveyed. That's what it tells me, I'm just asking the question.
Well, as far as I know, it's, the, the ones that were first surveyed have to be resurveyed. They, they want an update on that.
Okay, so it wouldn't be, because they said they're requiring it because it's been overlaid since. So I thought if there were ones that hadn't been relayed, I was kind of thinking along the same line. But I'm just basing that on what I'm reading here. Anywhere we can save money without having to do things twice for them.
Right. This proposal with Keck and Wood is in the amount of twenty-five thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars. And again, this was a non-budgeted item and would need to be paid from the fund balance.
How many roads are we talking about here?
Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you that, I don't know that. I can get back with you on that.
They're going to go out and look at the roads and see if they.
Excuse me, I'd like to introduce Rick Gurney, he's with Keck and Wood. He, he can speak to this a lot better than I can, because he's been on this project from the beginning.
Generally, the, the two state routes that are involved in this project, State Route sixty-one on the east side has been overlaid since we started this project. And also State Route one-on-one on the west side. And the work we're doing on those two roads, due to the overlay, it changes the elevation of the pavement. So we're going to have to raise our profile to match that, the new elevation. So we have to get the survey done. The DOT also checks that database and it won't meet their requirements. Their tolerances are like point ten feet, a tenth of a foot. And overlay is typically an inch and a half, which is point one-two. So it will be outside of their tolerance. So we need to go in and resurvey those surfaces to get them to where they are today.
So we'll be able to get a statement stating when it was, when the, what the servicing was done?
It was done in two thousand and six.
And then the last overlay that was, or not the overlay, but the last, uh?
The survey was done before that, because we started this project in nineteen ninety-eight.
Actually started in nineteen sixty-five.
We surveyed those roads before they did the overlay in six. So now we need to bring that database up to the current.
It's just those two locations where we're going to join one-on-one?
Yeah, generally the two state routes, we're tying in on each end of the project.
At the location we're tying in, okay.
Yeah.
And the, the, the third one here about the pavement is requiring a pavement evaluation report and pavement type, type selection report. And that proposal is with ECS Southeastern for the amount of eleven thousand, two hundred dollars to perform those services. Again, it was a non-budgeted item and will need to be paid from our fund balance.
Hi, Rick, what's your pavement evaluation report?
A pavement evaluation report is they'll go out in the field and they'll core out the existing pavement to find out how thick it is, the, the pavement and the graded aggregate basis underneath it to determine what the structure is of that road. And from that information, they'll find out what we need to put on top of it to bring it up to state standards as far as asphalt thickness. So that evaluation is that process. We have a, we have a vehicle count that we're designing by and that determines what kind of thickness we need on that asphalt. So this evaluation does that. The second one is the pavement type selection. That's a new thing that DOT requires. It, it's basically, you look at a life cycle of asphalt versus concrete. And it's, 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 it's just a process, it's just a report that you have to do to determine what's the right pavement type to put on this road. Either asphalt or concrete. It's either rigid, which is concrete, or flexible, which is asphalt.
Thank you.
There, there is a timeline with the G dot as well on this. We, we, we need to, if we can, move forward because I think they have an August deadline. So that, that involves us getting this together and getting it to them for their review and approval and, and that timeline.
You said August, this.
Up next year, yes, sir.
Up next year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Item D is Parks, Recreation, and Media Services. Ms. Vicki?
Good afternoon. Again, this is simply the contract language between the city and the contractor that is going to be performing the work for the trailhead. After some conversation with the city attorney, he thought it was best that we have the contract language actually approved by city council. So this is in fact in further support of what you approved last month. I don't know if you want to add anything?
I, I, I have reviewed the contract and it looks fine, but we do need to have it in our minutes that we formally approved it.
We didn't do it last month?
You, you approved the idea of moving forward, but you didn't approve the language of this contract.
I thought we went to the second.
You did, you went to the second bidder, but we didn't have the contract itself in front of us.
Okay. Second bidder got his chair up here, Alisa. Little bidder, I should say, not second, little bidder got the chairs.
That's just some W D four.
Okay, all right. You finished, Vicky? Okay. Item number F is governing body, North Avenue.
Number, I think we missed number E there.
Oh, E, okay, I'm sorry.
Which was the tourism board. And what you have before you is a resolution which will confirm the appointment of the initial members of the Visitors and Convention, Villarica Convention and Visitors Bureau. The Articles of Incorporation provide that the members of the DDA serve as the board of the CVB. And from here on out, it's just gonna be automatic that whoever you appoint to the DDA becomes a member of the board of the CVB. But for this first appointment, because the Articles of Incorporation say that the city council will appoint the members of the board, we thought it appropriate to have in the minutes of the city that you have appointed and confirmed the DDA as the CVB board. So that's a lot of acronyms, but I'm recommending that you do it.
All right. And Chris didn't have to run over for it.
I can't believe Chris didn't show up.
I was waiting for him to fly through the door.
He knew David had to come. All right. Now we will get to F, which is governing body. North Avenue is one. Counsel previously, okay, I'll read it. "North Avenue, the council previously abandoned and laid a solely portion of North Avenue from Dallas Highway south of Old Stone Road to accommodate the expansion of the hospital. This left two stretches of North Avenue that are no longer contiguous. It has been requested by, inter-mayor marchman that the portions from Dallas Highway north of Old Town Road be named J. Crowder Street. Property tax records show two residential parcels whose addresses would be affected." So that's something we can be thinking about. We have a map showing where it is. It's just a little stretch that goes out.
Is it one or two? Like, I don't remember if it's one, maybe in the wrong place. Is it right up here?
Well, the map here, it looks like two.
It's the hospital, so wouldn't it be right in?
Little section between.
Yeah, I know, but it goes up to 61.
Yeah, but that stops at there. I thought it was only this house here.
See, one on the right, one on the left.
That went on the left opens up to 61.
I'm talking about the top, Old Town Road, North Avenue.
There's not one up there.
It's not a house.
It goes on to Old, Old Town Road.
There's some cars right up there on the left.
What is that, right there?
Maybe we just can't see it because of the trees.
Looks like a house, I see.
But it says there's two.
Well, it is, whatever it is.
We can look, we can look. It's no big deal.
But anyway, this to be considered, and I hope you all consider that with the positive. But anyway, we'll wait till Tuesday and see. All right. Item number two is Historic Preservation Commission. Mr. Larry Coons, who has so faithfully been with us each month, has made an application for appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission. The HPC currently has three openings, so we will consider that.
Probably need to take about 45 minutes and grill him pretty heavily on his expectations and aspirations and past history and.
Do a background check.
Background check, gotta have a background check. We gotta have an engineer to make sure it's engineered done correctly.
All right, okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I know that's the end of our agenda. Would you mind if I brought up two topics? I know we really enjoy having a short meeting, so I won't drag it out.
Please.
One has to do with when we have public hearings and, you know, the people come up and speak and everything, and then they look at us and they ask questions, and we sit there because we're told we can't ask any questions, I mean, answer any. If maybe somehow at the end of those, at least those people can be addressed as to where to go to get the answer for those questions. Like, after the meeting, those of you that had questions, would you please see the city manager or the mayor or somebody or, or the clerk and give us your name and number so we make sure that you get addressed? So it's just awful awkward. Don't y'all find it awkward? People are asking questions, and we just sit there, and they're looking at us, and we're looking at them.
I find it awkward that people will actually come up and ask questions, knowing full well we're not gonna give an answer.
But I don't think a lot of them know that. There's people that come to hearings.
A lot of them may not.
I do.
Most people know what a town hall meeting is all about.
I think, I think our town, our city manager, after the meeting.
He usually is over there and answers.
Should discuss it with the people who want to talk about it.
He was over there answering questions.
Right, and I actually took someone to him, but they didn't know that. If there's maybe just a way we could let them know, those of you that had questions, please come up after the meeting, we'll deal with it. Okay. And the other thing has to do with the Chief Street and the crossing and all that. And the hearing was a lot of fun, but since then, between the emails and the phone calls, I've talked to the safety guy at Norfolk Southern who basically said that this was initiated by them. Because we've also been told it was city-initiated.
Oh, yeah, I saw that email that it had been initiated, but I knew I had to go get on closing those streets.
Yeah, I knew we hadn't discussed it, but that was somebody from Norfolk that was saying that, because I read her response. So it looks like it's coming entirely from them. What I find odd is that we were told that they held off on us, they were coming up this way, they were gonna jump over us, and then they were gonna continue on. And when I talked to Mr. Hicks from Bremen, they've had zero direct contact. Now, somebody called them to give them a heads up, a former employee that works for the railroad, but they've got stuff all along the railroad, and they've said nothing to them. And I don't know whether I should say this in open session or not, but I'm gonna anyway. I don't think they're being honest with us about why they want to close it. And that makes people very skeptical when the stories don't match up. I think Mr. Young brought up a very good point, that even if they took down the foliage, that the cars are taller than the height they want to have. And my truck was parked over there in one of those parking spaces the other day, and I go, well, that makes a lot. I'm not gonna see through that big old truck, and I thought, and I mentioned that to the man on the phone today. But anyway, I don't know, I don't know what, I know they hold a lot of cards, but I just don't think we should lay down and let them have their way. If there's a way to fight them without making them really angry, so they'll make our life miserable on what we lease from them. Bremen might be a good city to talk to because they have backed them down a couple times on things they told them that they needed to do.
If they haven't cut any trees in Bremen.
They said they haven't touched them and haven't talked to them about it.
One of the citizens came up, and I think he hit the nail right on the head. They've had a lot of trouble with that particular crossing. Truck's getting stuck on it. I think the problem is the truck getting stuck. We need to solve that problem.
But that's not what they're saying.
I know it, but we knew we need to solve that problem if we keep it open. We gotta solve that somehow. Big, big, big size, no trucks. Something they can't get by.
If I could just add one thing to that discussion, I just got an email today that essentially says that Georgia Department of Transportation just announced that they're going to do a formal study for Chief Street, the rail grade crossing. So that is the most current information that I have as of five minutes ago.
Because I'm not gonna be ready to do anything on Tuesday based on all these questions we have.
Okay.
Thanks, Vicky. All right, if there is nothing else for us to discuss, I declare this meeting be adjourned.
You don't have a two-hour executive session?
Yeah, this just ain't right. We need to stay here a little.
Yeah, we didn't make this a call meeting, so we can't.
And Mr. McCrory can get to his next meeting.
Do we have to do a?
We can do that.
We didn't do that, come in.
We don't, we don't vote in work sessions.
That's true.
He got something else to do, so.